All right, I will call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we have our first presentation is our ARC adoption promotion. Once again, my lips aren't working. Aww.
Isn't she cute?
She is.
She is.
She's a little wiggly.
That's okay.
All right, I am Officer Overbay. I'm Animal Control Officer for the county. We have Agnes here with us today. She's about five years old. She was just a stray in the area. But she really loves children. Children are her thing. So from younger all the way up to 12, she's been very tolerable of them with toys and things of that sort. And she's already spayed.
Look how happy she is.
She will have her microchip fully vaccinated and an up-to-date license until the end of the calendar year.
Awesome. Yeah, look at her. She's a cutie.
She's so happy.
I will warn you upfront that she is shedding.
Oh, she's nervous.
If you're wearing dark clothing, maybe wearing some white piece of fur. You can't go back there.
She's nervous.
Do you know if she ever had puppies?
At some point in time, she did, yes. She certainly does look like it.
Hi, big girl. Hi. Look at that face. Only a month. Come on.
Let's carry her. I know, I have dogs. I know. She goes, nope, not her. She was like, not her.
I know, I know.
My girl won't smell you anyway.
It got a little tight quarters all of a sudden.
She was scared. Michael, Michael. Brutus needs a sister.
Brutus is not friendly.
Brutus needs a sister.
He doesn't like anybody.
Anybody out there. He likes the dog next to you, you said.
Yeah, that's Stella, that's it. You don't even like Stella.
Ward, I can see that you immediately were attracted to her.
What?
She is cute.
Yeah, it's dark too.
All right, and then next for us, since I was just speaking about licenses, for her getting it until the end of the calendar year when adopting, now is our time to get our license. So for the 2023 calendar year, you can purchase them starting December 1st, either online, in person, off Webster Street. And they'll also have several locations that you can come purchase those from us. Or if need be, you know, we can see you out and about. One of us officers can do that for you.
This building too.
Yes, absolutely downstairs. You can purchase them there. I will tell you, do not wait until January 31st because the lines will be extravagant, if you can use that word. And it might take you quite a while to get it before the fine or the penalty is then put into place that next day, February 1st.
Okay.
Right, tell us how much they are?
It depends on if it's spayed or neutered. And then it'd be $20 or $24. And then there is a penalty, which is the $24.
And you can make donations, right? When you buy a license? So that determine costs and...
Yes, you absolutely can.
Are they doing hearts this year? If you do the extra?
Hearts and bones.
Those are nice, hearts and bones, yeah.
Hearts or bones. You can also buy multiple years at a time, but it does not get you a break.
Right.
So, but it'll...
You don't have to worry about it.
Kind of like your registration for your car. You don't have to worry about it for a few years.
There you go.
Yeah, absolutely. And the next thing I want to speak about is just the memorial donation from Matt Steele and Zach Maxwell. They have made large donations, providing us with benefiting the Tiny Tim Foundation, the heart in general donation, as well as providing free adoptions. So we, I believe we have how many left for this year?
We've got enough to cover for the rest of the year.
Yeah, for free adoptions.
That's nice.
Absolutely.
Unless we get a huge number of adoption in the next six weeks, which I hope we do, but...
Nice problem to have, right?
Yeah, it's a nice problem to have, yes. We have enough to cover free adoption for us here, including additional growth.
Oh, that's great. Yes, absolutely. They, let's see, in this year, they've donated over $7,500 that we were able to disperse through different programs.
Thank you.
Are you guys gonna do an adoption day at the Dayton Mall again?
We are, yeah, absolutely. And those free adoptions will be available there for anyone that likes to come. That'll be Saturday, December 10th, from 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. Sixa, as well as the Humane Society of Greater Dayton, will be there as well.
Okay.
So you can come and find us. We'll be at the atrium, kind of where the locket's on that heart.
Okay.
Right there. So it'll be a nice place, a good time, and then get to meet a lot of the dogs we have available right before the holidays.
Wonderful.
That's great, thank you.
And our free adoption will extend to Edmond as well.
Okay.
Excellent. Can you, to get the picture from the DATV, is there any way that they can see that dog better? That you could... I just think it's, she's so cute. There you go, look at her. There you go. She's a cutie.
Says, what, I don't like to be picked up.
While you're up, while you're down.
Aw, thank you.
Thank you.
It's hard to see sometimes when they're down on the ground and they can't pick up her. Yeah, look, aw.
Pick me back up.
Yeah.
I don't care if you're up here, but I didn't want to scratch up your business.
Aw, she's a cutie.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, thank you for all that you, the whole team.
Absolutely.
Every day you do wonderful work on behalf of the furry members of our community, so.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
She's picked me up, I like being picked up.
All right, well, thank you, thank you, thank you. And next we have Culture Works Arts Awards Recognition. We've got Jerry Piggy's, Matt Dunn, Rita Harden, and Michael London. London. Almost said Landon.
There they are.
The Culture Works team.
The team. The team is back. So this is, this is a really special award. So we're really, really proud to be able to to have this come to the county this year. It was first given out in 2018. It's called the Amber Best Clover Award. And if anybody knew Amber Best, you knew, yeah, you know. You know exactly, Carol. I mean, she had incredible energy. She served a wide range of arts organizations in the community, but she was on the board and chaired for Culture Works for a number of years. And she dedicated just enormous amounts of time and energy. So when Amber passed away, it was, it was a difficult time for a lot of people. And so they created this award to remember her every year. We were really pleased. We received this award in 2018, the very first one. And her husband was even there to share it with us. So we're really honored to be able to have this. And it's, it's come back to the county again in recognition of our campaign this year. So, and Rita, you want to share what some of the highlights on the campaign?
Some of the highlights, we had various events throughout the campaign. We had our annual bowl for the arts. We had dine and donate opportunities. We had Artists in the Workplace.
Go up to the microphone so we can hear you better, please, thank you.
We had various events. We had our annual bowl for the arts, Artists in the Workplace. We had our online auction, which was very successful, and our dine and donate opportunities. So it just raised almost $15,000 this year for the campaign, which was remarkable, being that, you know, the majority of our staff were working remotely. And human services, I mean, human services, human resources was a big help in helping the individuals working remotely from home receive information or any prizes that they may have won during the campaign. So they were very helpful to us. And we had a wonderful committee of 30 individuals that we all worked as a well-oiled machine. It was wonderful. And we have a few of the committee members here today. If you would like to stand, that'd be fabulous.
Come on.
Yay, team!
I think so.
It was a really fun campaign, and we always enjoyed it every year.
Awesome.
We love it.
Yes.
It's always fun.
Just the best. Thank you, Jeff.
Rita and Michael, I'm still waiting on my third-place bowling trophy. And it still hasn't come through.
So you didn't tell me he's got a long wait.
Come back and win next year. And then you'll get an award.
2023.
But this was good recognition for the county. And, and the reason we got this was because of all of the members.
Absolutely.
Because there's such a range of support throughout. And they wanted to recognize that because it had the same energy that Amber gave to all of them.
Absolutely.
That's great.
Well, Michael, you and Rita did a fantastic job this year. I want to say thank you to both of you. And, and the committee. The whole committee was just fantastic. Thank you.
Rita really does most of the work. I'm just a pretty face, right?
And so, yes, and so in addition, I was not a part, I won't take credit for all of that. I did donate, but I can't take credit. But I wanted to share about Matt Dunn because he was one of three recipients that received individual awards this year. And this is the first time that Culture Works recognized specific individuals. And they said, this happened at a meeting in November of this year. And he is the Executive Director of the Montgomery County Arts and Cultural District. And he received the Producer of the Year Award. And so I just want to read just a tad what that means, right? And so during the presentation, Karen Maynor noted that Matt has worked in the arts for quite a while. And in addition to his role at the Montgomery County Arts and Cultural District, he also is an ex-official member of Culture Works Board, which bring, and he brings an enormous amount of historic knowledge and ideas to the arts field in general and to our community in particular. He encourages them to learn from history, but not to repeat it if it's a method and it's not logical or effective or equitable or just. So you can learn from history, but you need to also recognize when it's time to change. This award, this award is for his work publicly and behind the scenes advocating for the arts and cultural community and for addressing equity issues related to accessing arts and cultural resources. He works with Culture Works to regularly evaluate impact, to make sure that the guidelines and processes are equitable, excuse me, and also set priorities such as adding capacity building as an eligible activity. And so they do give Matt a great deal of thanks for all that he does for the arts within our community. He also received an original art from Mike, is it Elias?
Elsas.
Elsas. And so he received that as a token of their appreciation. So congratulations, Matt, as well.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Matt.
That's awesome, thank you. You know, we all know Doreen worked so hard, Doreen Ragsdale. She really got us all really engaged in this campaign. And, you know, when you think about it, it's like, boy, those were some big shoes to fill. But you guys have done it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you. Now, who got the Doreen Ragsdale Award?
Oh, one of the coordinators from Caresores.
Oh, nice, oh, okay.
She got the firecracker award.
The firecracker, I love it. So Doreen, yeah.
Yeah, you're really good.
So Doreen, that's great, thanks, guys. Let's get a picture, don't we think?
Oh, yeah, come on, team.
Come on, everybody who's in line.
Team.
Yeah, we need to out here.
Culture Works teams.
Where, where do you want us? Where do you want them?
Maybe the three of us should stand up, or four of us?
Down there.
What else?
This is big stuff.
It's just gonna be really crowded. I was thinking maybe we should just stand up.
About what?
I was thinking maybe we should just stand up because it's gonna be so crowded.
We should stand up here, Carolyn. Carolyn?
Look, we'll come up here because we can...
Okay. You want us up there?
It'd be so crowded.
I do, whatever.
What do they, what do you think, Robert?
You want us up there, Robert?
Come here, Carolyn. Get in the middle because we're too close to it.
Okay, okay.
Oh, Michael's joining us.
Of course, Michael works hard for, for Culture Works. Thank you all.
Nice, thank you.
Love you, sir.
This is, you got it?
Hey, Matt? Why don't you come up here, Matt?
Matt's like, what? What did I do?
You're the center of attention. Look, this is a little bit different than a house sauce.
No, it goes in his office.
It goes in his office.
Matt, I'm gonna get in the back since I'm tall.
All right.
He's really been doing some different stuff lately.
Thank you, your generosity makes it possible.
Thank you. It's beautiful. He's done some different stuff lately.
Yeah, I like that. Okay, I want, Michael, London, you come up here. And I want you to tell everybody what you told me, where you're going after you retire and the award you got. I think everybody needs to know this.
Look at Michael, he's not so sure he wants to tell this.
Why not? Is it a secret?
Come on!
I don't know if I'm allowed to.
Okay, well...
Well, Judy said do it, so...
Oh, how about this? There's no fallout. It's a free pass. How about this? How about just saying where you're going to be traveling?
Oh, oh, okay.
How's that?
I'll do that. Yeah, I'll go over here and say...
Because he's retiring here.
We don't want to know too much.
Yeah, I was like, I can't tell, no. No, I'm going to, so many of you know that I'm retiring very soon here. And so Judy was like, so what's next? Do you got anything to do? Are you, I said, I've got so much stuff that I'm working on. As a matter of fact, Jason back there, he knows that I'm working over at the studios on a project over there that we're working on with a group of artists. At DATV, we're using their studios. But what Judy and I were talking about is, I, you know, I won't go into the details, but I was very lucky and I received some national recognition for my writing. You know, some of you may know I have another career as a playwright. So I have a number of scripts that I'm working on. And so I've received an award, a national award as a playwright. And I'm gonna be using that award to create a new work here in Dayton. So, yeah, so that's good. So I'm gonna be busy. I'm gonna be plenty busy. And I'm going back, some of you know I went to school in England, and I'm going back and visit friends and go back and visit people at school and, yeah, all that kind of stuff.
Wonderful.
It's exciting.
Yeah.
Good for you.
So that's what I'm up to.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll leave the other announcements for the others to do later.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And now, the county engineers.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen. We have three items today for your approval. The first is Resolution 22-1705 with Eagle Bridge Company for the Lamb Road Improvement Project in Miami Township at their lowest and best bid of $2,613,791.71 through October 31st, 2023. These are all approval of agreements. 1706 is with E.L. Robinson Engineering of Ohio Company for the Patterson Bridge Project, City of Dayton at a cost not to exceed $184,549 through June 30th of 2024. And 1707 is with Centerville Washington Park District and Washington Township Trails, Inc., in connection with the Social Rural Road Project Phase 1.
I'll move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. County Sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Sheriff, we have Resolution 1708, authorizing a change order with Motorola Solutions, Inc. for the Callworks GeoDiverse E911 phone system for hardware and software to the Vesta GeoDiverse E911 phone system. We also have Resolution 1709, submit a grant application and certificate of confidential funds to the Ohio Department of Public Safety for the Recovery Ohio Law Enforcement Fund Grant to fund the Regional Agencies Narcotics and Gun Enforcement Range Task Force in the amount of $46,000.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Domestic Relations Court.
Under the Domestic Relations Court, we have Resolution 1710, authorizing a facility rental and catering services agreement with Sinclair Community College in an amount not to exceed $945.13.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Juvenile Court.
Good afternoon, thank you, Commissioners. On behalf of Anthony Capizzi, Administrator Judge, we have two items for consideration today. 22-1711, authorizing agreement with Affordable Language Services to provide interpreting services in an amount not to exceed $20,000 through December 31st, 2024. And 22-1712, authorize a grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Youth Services for the ongoing operation of the court subsidy, targeted reclaim and competitive reclaim grant program in the amount of $6,340,954.90 through June 30th, 2023.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
County Coroner.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Coroner, we have Resolution 1713, authorizing an agreement with Ohio University Heritage College of the Orthopedic Medicine for Clinical Observation Services through August 19th, 2023, with options to renew.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
County Administrator.
Under the County Administrator and the Clerk's Office, we have approved the minutes of the meetings on November 15th, 2022. Resolution 1714, approval of bills. And Resolution 1715, approval of travel and expenses. Both of those lists are available in the Clerk's Office.
Move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Administrative Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have several resolutions for your review today, beginning with 1716. This is the approval of personnel actions. This list is available in the Clerk's Office. 1717, authorizes a grant agreement with the Ohio Emergency Management Agency for funds made available under the FEMA Emergency Management Performance Grant in the amount of $74,623 through December 31st, 2022. 1718, authorizes participation by the Office of Strategic Initiatives in a fiscal year 2022 grant application submitted by the City of Dayton to the U.S. Department of Justice for further development and maintenance for the Criminal Justice Information System, also known as Justice Web, in an amount not to exceed $34,937. Resolution 1719, authorizes a change order to the agreement with Brune Ball Construction Incorporated, a general contractor for the municipal court in Trotwood New Building Project, by increasing the original amount by $114,318 for a revised total of $6,466,768.50 and extending the term through January 22nd, 2023. The next two resolutions authorize purchases for furniture and insulation services for the administration building ninth floor renovation project. 1720 is with APG Office Furnishings in an amount not to exceed $77,810.72. And 1721 is with Elements for Interiors at an amount not to exceed $167,775.42. And the last two resolutions solicit bids for the Risk, Safety, and Emergency Management Department. The first is 1722 for a bomb robot upgrade project and 1723 for air showering equipment.
Move to approve.
I'll second it, but a couple of things. On the, where was I? Oh, on the municipal court in Trotwood. What, what date are we looking at for it to be finished?
We're looking for a mid-January completion date.
Oh, wow. That's the time of year I realized.
Yeah.
That's great, I drove by it recently, it looks really good.
Yeah, we're really proud of the progress.
Looks good. And then the other one, I remember several years ago, they came over and they did a demonstration of the bomb robot. Think we could see it sometime?
Sure, we can, we can give it to City Dayton and see if they'd be interested in having us see it.
Yeah, okay, thanks. So I second it. I see it on television.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, it's moved to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Environmental Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For Environmental Services, we have Resolution 1724, authorizing agreement for professional consulting services with Hazen and Sawyer for the Joint Hydraulic Model Update Master Plan Project at a cost not to exceed $99,400 through December 31st, 2024. 1725, issuing authorization to discharge wastewater permit to Valicor Environmental Services, LLC, a significant industrial user discharging to the Western Regional Water Reclamation Facility. 1726, releasing easement deed for water lines through property belonging to FSU Holdings 1, LLC in connection with the Chick-fil-A Washington Township Development and record the same. Resolution 1727, accept the easement deed for water lines through property belonging to FSU Holdings 1, LLC in connection with the Chick-fil-A Washington Township Development and record the same. And the next three are to amend agreements. The first is Resolution 1721-28 Arc Flash Assessment by adding $98,532.35 to the original amount for revised total of $572,885.35 and extend the term through December 31st, 2023. The last one is Resolution 1730 with Kinnison Excavating, Inc., for the Dryden Road Water Main Replacement Project by adding $44,564.70 to the original amount for revised total of $645,189.70 and extend the term through December 31st, 2023. The last one is Resolution 1730 with Kinnison Excavating, Inc., for the Dryden Road Water Main Replacement Project by adding $44,564.70 to the original amount for revised total of $645,189.70 and extend the term of the agreement through December 30th, 2022.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You know, I noticed, nothing you do is cheap.
Right, I, I didn't, I didn't say a million dollars today on anything, so I was like, impressed with that.
We didn't, but, thank you, though. We, we know how much this all costs, but, yeah, every time, Matt, it's like, okay.
Yeah. All right, OMB, John Parks.
Thank you. We have Resolution 1731 to recognize the establishment of the BCCIT Department, Communications Department, and the Office of Strategic Initiatives effective September 1st, 2018.
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're just curious, why did we have to officially recognize it?
We needed to memorialize the departments, because we allocate dollars to them and we created those departments, Commissioners, so we needed to effectively acknowledge their memorialization. So we went, and we made it retroactive when I started as Administrator to create these departments. So we wanted it on the record officially.
Got you, understood.
Yep, makes sense.
Human Services.
Yes, good afternoon. We have Resolution 1732, which is authorizing an agreement with Expressions of Life, Inc., of the Greater Miami Valley for the Parent Cafe Program in a, in an amount not to exceed $50,000 of Ohio Children's Trust Funds through June 30th of 2023. Resolution 1733, which authorizes an affiliation agreement with the University of Cincinnati to provide educational field experiences for undergraduate, graduate, and postgraduate candidates pursuing a degree in social work program through December 31st of 2024. Resolution 1734, authorizing an agreement with Riverview Behavioral Health, LLC, for substitute care services through March 31st of 2024. Resolution 1735, assign authority to the County Administrator to act as the Board of County Commissioners designate for approving inter-county adjustments of allocated funds for calendar year 2023. Also authorizing inter-agency agreements through December 31st of 2023. Resolution 1736 for Children's Services Division and the Prosecutor's Office for legal services provided by the Prosecutor's Child Protection Unit. 1737 is the Child Support Enforcement Agency and the Office of Strategic Initiatives to share responsibilities of the fatherhood initiative position. Also authorizing agreements to provide eligibility referral and support services with funding in an actual amount of 50% of the expenses incurred for salaries, fringe benefits, and other costs through December 31st of 2023. And those are Resolution 1738 for Ohio Healthcare Association, and 1739 for Foundations Health Solutions.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Business Services.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under Business Services, I have one resolution for you. 1740 authorizes the purchase from M&amp;J Technology for Workspace One License Renewals in an amount not to exceed $101,580 through December 2nd, 2023.
I move for approval.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Under County Commissioners, we have Resolution 22-1741 to appoint Nicole Miller to the Greater Dayton Regional Transit Authority Board of Trustees through September 29th, 2025. Resolution 22-1742 to reappoint DeShona Pepper Robertson, Julio Christian Mateo Prado, and Vernon Fernandez to the Arts and Cultural District for terms ending March 31st, 2025. And that is the only two we have?
Right. Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Comments by citizens? We do have one request for comments, and that would be Kelly Kennett. Would you please come to the podium and give us your address? And you have three minutes.
Hello, 2266 Terry Lynn Avenue, Dayton, Ohio, 45439. Good afternoon, and thank you for having me. I was here a few months ago to discuss concerns with the Montgomery County Children's Services Agency and the caseworker that is overseeing my case. When my case was first opened, I was told that if I were to put the father of my children out of my home, my children would be able to return home to me. He was never added to the case plan, and no services were suggested to alleviate their invalid concerns. He had never done anything to my children. When he passed away in March of this year, I had expected my children to be returned home to me. Sadly, this was not the case. I have since completed a case plan and complied fully with the agency, and it breaks my heart that the holiday season is approaching and my children are still not home. After much persistence, I was granted a new caseworker at the end of July. When I started making progress, she was going to suggest reunification. They removed her from my case and left me with the old caseworker that I had had so many concerns about. The agency has refused to follow court-ordered visitation schedule, resulting in me seeing my children a total of eight times in the past year. They have ignored subpoenas to appear in court and provide documents relevant to my case. I've tried, I've tried to resolve this issue at every level of the agency. I have immediate concerns for the safety of my children and their placement, and my concerns continue to be ignored. The caseworker has shown obvious racism and prejudice towards my family. A few weeks ago, she made an unfounded court filing to move my three-month-old, who was placed with a different family member, back into foster care. I just thank God that the judge was able to see she was not acting in the best interest of my child and stop this from happening. Unfortunately, she filed this again against the wishes of the guardian alightum and the magistrate. I'm asking each of you to imagine spending Christmas without your children. How is it allowed that an agency meant to keep families together is so determined to keep mine apart? I'm asking you to intervene on behalf of my children and send them home for Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, County Administrator.
Thank you, Commissioners. I want to give a shout out to our field services team, Matt's team, the crews that are out there every single day, Commissioners, fixing our water main breaks. And so often, you know, we don't realize how much work they do. And our dedicated men and women, they maintain approximately 1,400 miles of water lines. And just to put that in perspective, that's the distance from here to Aspen, Colorado. So that's a lot of water lines.
Long distance.
And as you might expect, typically, we see most water main breaks in the wintertime, December through February, because it gets cold here. However, the team also is out there regardless of the weather, and they do a great job. And there's all kinds of breaks that go on throughout the year. So I just wanted to give a shout out, Matt, the whole team, the whole crew out there. I know they work hard. I had an opportunity to go out and spend some time with them. I was supposed to be undercover, but I think everybody knew I was.
Undercover boss.
Yeah. It didn't take long. So my whole undercover was blown. But I was supposed to be doing a training, and strange enough, a real live water main break happened.
Oh, wow.
Actually, two of them, in two different places. So I ended up going from one end of catering to the other end, but it's pretty phenomenal when you go in the holes and then all the utility lines that are running under there, not related to what we're doing. And the operators have to protect all of that infrastructure to get to the actual break. So thanks, Matt, for allowing me to, to go out and spend some time. But great work. Our, our team does great work.
Definitely pass along.
Yes.
We appreciate that, and that's why we make all these expensive investments, so that we have fewer of those.
Yes.
When that both.
Aging infrastructure.
And we never want them to happen, right?
Right.
Always at a bad time. Well, I want to share news. We have some Montgomery County residents with severe developmental or intellectual disabilities that could use some help this holiday season. And it's the Stillwater Giving Tree, it's going virtual, and allowing all of us to collect a wish list for a Stillwater Center resident from your computer, so you don't even have to go there. The ages of the residents range from five into their seventies, so the whole span. And you get, I've already gotten mine, you get a, a tag with some ideas of what you could buy them. So you can go online, you can see the age and gender of those who still have gift tags available, and they are disappearing, we hope they all disappear. You can go to the website, our, our main website, www.mcohio.org, then click on the department dropdown, and then select Stillwater Center, and then click, you know, four steps, get to the Giving Tree link, and you'll find it. You do not need to purchase every item on the list, it just gives you a number of items that would be appropriate. You can get one or a few, or you can get all of them if you're feeling that generous. And items must be new, unwrapped, and labeled with the resident's initials. Gifts must be dropped off or shipped to the Stillwater Center by Friday, December 9th, and many previous donors have found Amazon to be a very convenient way to purchase and send those donations. If you have questions or issues during the registration process, contact Shonda Sulfridge at 937-890-0646. And these are really, for those of us who've had the opportunity to visit there, when you go to Stillwater, you come away so grateful. I know that it really touched my heart of these, of our citizens who are so medically fragile, and the caretakers, and the whole staff who so lovingly take care of them day in, day out, weekend, month in, year in, year out, and the families that love them, but it's just too much to be at home. So you could really make this individual's holiday very special by just sharing some of your generosity with those who can't go out and, and get things like the rest of us are so fortunate to do. So think about it, if you have the time and interest, we would much appreciate it on their behalf.
Now, how long on the trees that you can get the tags?
Until they're all gone.
Till they're all gone, okay, all right.
Twenty left. Oh, there's only twenty left.
Okay, good. And they want the gifts by the ninth.
By the ninth. And I do think, we're not suggesting anybody has to use Amazon, but it's a darn convenient way to get it there.
So I would guess that when you put the address in, that's where you could put the initials.
Initials.
Okay, that seems like the easy thing to do.
Right. But we're not telling anybody what to do.
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner Dodge, you have any?
Okay. Matt, you can chime in on this one if you'd like to, because I'm gonna talk about what's happening down there. Effective January 1st, Montgomery County Solid Waste District will launch new hours for the collection of household hazardous waste. Now, that's household hazardous waste. Going forward, winter collection times will run November through February from 1:00 to 7:00 p.m. on the first Tuesday of the month. Summer collection times, March through October, will be every Tuesday 1:00 through 7:00 p.m. During these specified hours, items like oil, pesticides, paint thinner, and fertilizer can be dropped off under the green recycling canopy at the Solid Waste District, which is at 1001 in Crete Lane in Moraine. Now, if you didn't catch everything I just said, there is a quiz, by the way, to see what days and times I just talked about. But for more information, go to MCSWD, that's MCSWD.org, and it'll be more specific as far as the dates and the times, so thank you.
And I've heard the commercial probably five times in the last three days.
Yeah, I have too, yeah. Heard a lot, yeah.
That's good, yeah.
And it's real short and sweet, but.
It's short and sweet, you can understand what they're saying, so that's good.
Yep.
Okay, Bravo, Communications Team, you're good at your jobs.
Good job, Kevin. Well, we talked about it a little bit earlier when we had the cute dog here, but it's dog license time again, and again, those can be purchased online starting this Thursday, can you believe it's December?
I know.
I can't believe it. December 1st, Thursday. And the licenses can also be purchased in person at our building, the County Administration Building, or at the Animal Resource Center, which is located at 6790 Webster Street. And all dogs three months of age or older are required by Ohio Law to be licensed, and it has to be done by January 31st. And again, the cost is $20 for altered dogs and $24 for unaltered.[1708.82]